Thank you. Welcome to the May 13th, 2021 meeting of the Town of Southampton Planning Board. In accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 202.1 and its related extensions. And until further notice, all of the Board's meetings will be held remotely by a video conference. So we ask the public continually check the website for updates and new information. May we have a roll call, Gloria, please?
Yes, Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finerty.
Present.
The Secretary is here, Board Member Zuccarelli. Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
And Board Member Long.
Present.
We are all here, we have a quorum.
Great. Join in please for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have three public hearings this evening with applicants and members of the public standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Sutton will be muting and holding the speakers in a virtual waiting room until it's their time to give testimony before the Board. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking should state their name and address for the record. A further reminder that despite the Zoom environment, all comments should be directed to the Board and not to other participants. The link to participate in this meeting via Zoom can be found on the town's website. This meeting is also being livestreamed on the town's website on the Town Clerk's Meeting Portal. If you're having difficulty accessing the meeting, please visit the Town Clerk's Meeting Portal and click on the Instructions link. Public comments can be made via Zoom, by email, or by uploading them to the Town Clerk's Portal on the Planning Board's page. You'll see on that page a button you can click to upload your comments. Please do not use Zoom chat function to register your comments. Comments, any comments made via the chat function will not be included nor made part of the record. Instead, you may either speak at the hearing or submit your comments in writing after the hearing. Board members who must recuse themselves from any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of the hearing. Unless otherwise stated, at the end of each hearing, those applications will remain open for written comments from the applicant and the public for 30 days. Those comments can also be made by email or by uploading the comments to the Town Clerk's Portal under the Planning Board Meeting page. Additionally, in accordance with the Governor's order, these hearings will be recorded and transcribed and will be made available to the public. There we are. Okay, so public hearing number one is 115-127 Halsey Lane. And do we have sufficient notice?
We do, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Matthew, do you want to read this into the record?
I can do that. Notice of public hearing, please take notice that in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order Number 202.1, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, May 13th, 2021 at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York, to consider pre-application held entitled 115-127 Halsey Lane. Pre-application consists of a lot line modification which proposes to transfer 2,937 square feet from parcel two to parcel one on a 137,265 square foot total project area situate within the R80 zoning district, the WQI high priority area, a New York State archeologically sensitive area, and in proximity to town regulated wetlands situate at 115 and 127 Halsey Lane. Suffolk County Tax Map numbers 900-114-3-20.3 and 20.5 by order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Gloria Burke, Secretary.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And who is here for this application?
Rob Marsinski, which I believe he is here and sharing the screen as we speak.
Rob Marsinski.
Rob, you're muted.
Yeah, can you hear me now? My bad.
Yes.
All right, sorry. Again, good evening. For the applicant, Robert Marsinski, Goshay Marsinski, ruin 250 North Sea Road, Southampton. This is an application to obtain approval of a lot line modification and a land transfer of a 10-foot strip of land from one parcel to an adjacent parcel that occurred by deed back in 1982. The two lots at issue were created as part of a two lot minor subdivision of Gwendolin Halsey, which was approved by the Planning Board in October of 1979 as Minor Subdivision Map Number 407. What I have here, which I assume you can see, is my Exhibit A, which is a copy of the approved map by the Planning Board back in October, as I said, of 1979. This subdivision created a street lot, which was parcel one, which is now known as 115 Halsey Lane, and a flag lot immediately behind parcel one, which is parcel two, which is now known as 127 Halsey Lane. Access to parcel two was over this 30-foot flagpole, flag strip. Pursuant to that original subdivision map, parcel two consisted of 94,575 square feet, while parcel one comprised of approximately 42,690 square feet. The time the subdivision approved, both these lots were located in an R40 zoning district and were therefore both conforming lots. Subsequent to that, there was an upzone, which Matt had indicated, that now indicated, not now located in an R80 zoning district, then parcel one would be non-conforming as to lot area. It said before the parcel two, access to parcel two was over a 30-foot wide flag strip at the time they were created. There was a hedge row. You could see on Exhibit A here on this old map, there is actually a line that goes down, and it says hedge. So that hedge row was there back in 1979 when the subdivision was approved. It extended from parcel one into the flagpole approximately 10 feet. There are also photographs of the hedge row as it exists today, which if you want to tilt your head there, that's looking from the street, Halsey Lane, down it, which is all on the right side. And this is from the opposite direction, looking from the back of the driveway or whatever towards Halsey Lane. After parcel one was created in 1979, it was sold to Alan and Terry Bluman Fell by deed dated November 14th, 1980. It was recorded on November 25th, 1980, Libra 8920, Page 207. I've included a copy of that deed here as Exhibit C, which was from the Gwendolin Halsey to the Bluman Fells. Thereafter, by deed dated June 15th, 1982, recorded July 13th, 1982, at Libra 9211, Page 53. It was conveyance of the westerly portion of the flagpole from parcel one to parcel two. This is a copy of that deed from, again, Gwendolin Halsey to the Bluman Fells, and it effectively transferred that portion of the, the westerly portion of the flagpole that existed also west of the existing hedge row that was there. After the conveyance, there still remained a 20-foot flagpole which gave access to parcel two. That transfer, the 10-foot transfer, 10-foot strip was done without planning Board approval. And the purpose of this application is now to obtain approval for the transfer that occurred approximately 39 years ago. It's our position that the approval of the 1982 conveyance will merely move a portion of the property boundary line that separates the two properties that runs along the flagpole so that it actually conforms with the way that these two parcels have existed and have been used for the past 39 years. Also, the approval will formally transfer the, an additional 2,937 square feet of lot area from parcel one to parcel, onto parcel one, excuse me, and will make it more conforming as to lot area. And as I said, if it was approved, there would still remain a 20-foot flagpole for access to parcel two. One other issue I wanted to mention is the, our map shows a proposed 75-foot non-disturbance buffer, which we requested to show on the map. There presently exists a maintained lawn, pretty much down to the shoreline, at least in the southwesterly portion of the property. This is a photograph of the improved lawn area looking towards Mill Creek. Another one there with the shed that exists there. Pursuant to the 1979 subdivision, a 50-foot wide buffer was supposed to be established by covenant. And it was actually, covenant was filed and recorded. That covenant is included here. This is the covenant, the declaration that basically provided for, among other things, a, under Paragraph Three, the establishment of a 50-foot wide strip of land along the shoreline of Mill Creek to be maintained in its natural state. While the buffer was not entirely adhered to, as I said, because there is a portion of the buffer area that is still lawn, we maintain that that buffer is adequate and that any portion of the wetlands law requiring a 75-foot buffer or a larger buffer is inapplicable. In that regard, we refer to Southampton Town Wetlands Law, Section 325-4, that says that the wetlands, this chapter shall apply to all regulated activities within the Town of Southampton, except for the following, which under subdivision three, subsection three, I should say, states planting, seeding, cultivating, or maintaining without the use of fertilizers, a disturbed area in agricultural use or horticulturally improved on the effective date of this chapter. Under the town's wetlands laws, the definition of a horticulturally improved area pertinent part is a disturbed or artificial upland vegetated community such as mowed lawns, mowed lawn with trees, ornamental trees, or shrubs, and landscaping that are created and maintained by human activities. And we would say that obviously this lawn has been created and has been maintained by human activities. I submitted a portion of the wetlands laws as exhibit to this application, as Exhibit G. And, you know, bottom line, I guess it's our position that the lot line modification will only confirm the way the properties have existed and been used for the past 39 years with no apparent detrimental impacts to the wetlands. The approval of the prior transfers for portions of the property which are located approximately 380 feet away from the wetland boundary at its nearest point, and there is, as far as we're concerned, absolutely no impacts to the wetlands as a result of this transfer. And there's no nexus between the transferring and the impacts to wetlands. As I said, the, the larger portion of the, in the southwest, southwest corner of the property has been maintained in its natural condition, which is more than the 50-foot buffered area as required under the covenant pursuant to the 1979 subdivision. And we propose to, you know, basically establish and actively maintain the 50-foot buffer as required pursuant to that subdivision, as well as maintain the current existing natural areas to the, on the southerly portion of the property in their natural state and remove the shed that's within, partially in the buffer area. And only request, I guess, that there be a walkway to the shore to that buffer. And that's basically all I have to say. And I'll try and answer any questions.
Yeah, Rob, I have one question. I'm just looking at the covenant and restriction that's on the screen right now. And it speaks to if it's not maintained in its natural state in a state approved as sufficient by the Board of Trustees. Do you have to run this by the trustees to do anything with this?
Do I do what to the trustees?
You have to run this by the trustees before we do anything.
Not that I'm aware of. I wouldn't think that they have any juris, I mean.
I'm just looking at Paragraph Three.
Yeah, I know. I'm looking at it right now. Shall maintained in its natural state or in a state approved as sufficient by the Board of Trustees. So, I mean, I would assume by that reading is if I'm going to maintain it in its natural state, I don't necessarily have to go to the Board of Trustees. Only if I want to maintain it in some other way, other than its natural state, do I, would I maybe have to go to the Board of Trustees?
Okay, so excuse me if I misunderstood. I thought there was some infringement of this buffer zone.
Right, well, I think what happened is that it, that lawn, if you look at the old subdivision map, was always there. And after the establishment of the buffer through the subdivision, they continued to maintain the property and never really adhered, at least in the, they said, in the southwesterly corner of the property, they never really allowed that portion of the property to grow into its natural state, basically, just to let it grow. They continue to mow it to this day.
So it's not in its natural state, which would trigger.
Well, unless you want to say its natural state was lawn.
I, well, I, not much.
And I'm not saying that. I'm not trying to be flippant.
No, no, I know you're not trying to be flippant. I'm trying to, to, to go to the meaning of this. And you, you, you have a leg up on me because I'm looking at this for the first time. And you're telling me that there's disturbance of that buffer. And from my passive reading of this, if there's disturbance by the buffer, it looks like the trustees get triggered into this. And I, I don't fall into, I don't want to fall into a problem with the trustees.
No, well, it says, I mean, again, it says you shall be maintained in its natural state or in a state approved as sufficient by the Board of Trustees. So I'm saying if I'm not going to maintain it in its natural state and I want to maintain it in a state other than its natural state, then I may have to go to the Board of Trustees to ask them if it's okay or get their approval to maintain it in something other than its natural state.
My, my understanding, and maybe Matt can correct me because he's our guy on revedge, is lawn considered natural state or is that considered an incursion in the buffer?
I would say no, not in its natural state, but there is the provision in 325. Rob, can you go to the section that you.
Refer to?
That you inferred to because you were reading a definition. I just want to make sure.
Right, this is the definition of horticulturally improved?
Yes.
Right there, horticulturally improved. Disturbed or net artificial upland vegetative communities such as mowed lawns, mowed lawn with trees and ornamental trees or shrubs, landscapes, vegetables, or flower gardens, you know, blah, 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 maintained by home, human activities.
I don't know if that, if that statute and that definition, I don't know legally, if that statute and that exception here would amend the covenant, which would take precedence, the covenant or this section?
Well, the covenant was probably imposed before the.
It was imposed before, before 325, so I think that's the reason referring to the trustees.
Right, I mean, this was done in 79.
Yeah.
So which do we need to trust? I'm just asking for a legal, or some kind of determination. Do we need the trustees to do this or can we go on to this exception? I don't want to muss with the trustees and their jurisdiction.
To be fair, Rob, natural state in our covenants typically does not mean mowed.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not suggesting that it does. I'm simply saying, and I said that we will stop mowing that portion of the property that is within that 50-foot covenanted buffer. Anything, if you look at, you know, the, the map, anything pretty much to the, what would that be, to the east of the shed? I mean, that's pretty much in its, it's in, it's been in its natural state. Anything to the west and south of the shed is where the mowing has.
Rob, I think the Board, the Board would benefit from seeing an aerial of the property, which I have. So if you can stop your, your screen share, I can pull that out.
An aerial?
Yeah, I have.
Oh, you want me to just drop, stop my share?
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
So they can see it. I mean, as far, as far as I'm aware, the lot line modification does trigger the 325 for this property that it would have to be brought into compliance. I've done two others where that was the case, which would involve the 75-foot buffer and meeting of all wetlands setbacks.
That makes sense.
What I'm saying, would you, the other section of the wetlands law, there's an exception for horticulturally improved portions of the property. I'm saying, I've been, I was horticulturally improved prior to the adoption of the wetlands law. I had a lawn there back in 1979. And all I'm saying is that while there's a portion of my lawn that probably should have been allowed to grow, it ain't 75 feet.
Right, and one of the issues, of course, with the contamination of Mill Pond is the.
Well, I mean, we could talk about covenants for like no fertilization, if that's what you're referring to.
That law is, well, not only this lawn, but many lawns that are cared for, that's, that's the intent of the natural vegetation buffer. So can you, can, Matt, can you just tell us what the action is on this in our, in our regular session?
I mean, this, I mean, it's, it's to approve the lot line modification, which is to transfer the portion of the flagpole.
The 10, 10 feet.
10 feet from two to one, but as, as, in changing the, the configuration of these lots, as, you know, as far as the practice, you know, you know, what I've done before on similar applications is these lots would have to be in compliance with all provisions of 325 because the configuration's changing. So the 50-foot buffer, they would have to have a 75-foot buffer as well as you meet the setbacks for existing structures. I mean, it's been referred to the Conservation Board and Marty's office. It's also going to, you know, be subject to a 29239B referral. I can certainly get more information, you know, prior to approval. We still, you know, we still have time, obviously.
Does the 10 feet run the entire line of lot?
10 feet is just on the flagpole. So it's, it's outside of the jurisdiction of wetlands, but.
As I said, it's 300, 380 feet away.
No, no, I just wondered whether it ran the length of the, of.
Yeah, it's just, I'll show you on the map. It's on the next page. See, as you can see here, this is the full width as it exists now.
Go to the next one, it actually highlights it. Yeah, right there.
This is the 10 feet that's, you know, just a little over 10.
You go down, it ends at the.
On parcel one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm saying 325, four, there's an exception, which says wetlands law, the chapter shall not apply to all, you know, shall apply to regulated activities within the Town of Southampton, except for the following, you know, and among other things, it says a disturbed area in agricultural or horticulturally improved on the effective date of this chapter. And I was horticulturally improved as of the effective date of this chapter.
But does that succeed a C and R that predates?
Oh, I'm not, again, I'm not talking about the 50-foot buffer. I'm saying anything outside of the 50-foot buffer, more than the 50-foot buffer. That's what I'm saying. I'm not making any argument saying that we don't have to comply with the 50-foot buffer. I'm saying we do. And I'm saying we will horticulturally improve or whatever the portion of the 50-foot buffer that is not in its natural state. But I'm, I'm simply saying that that's the extent as far as I'm concerned because there's an exception under the wetlands laws for horticulturally improved properties or areas that were, that predate the wetlands law. And as you, as I was saying, you'd see on the 1979 subdivision, Matt, that, you know, there was lawn pretty much all the way, almost down to the shoreline.
Now, the discussion is about 25 feet.
Essentially. Well, actually a little bit more because the way that we show this is 75-foot from probably the wetlands boundary.
Correct.
Not from the shoreline, which is different. Because the wetlands, as you see on the map, if you want to, I don't know, show that portion of the map, which shows where the wetlands, the flag wetlands are, which is not the shoreline.
Right.
I mean, this is all the wetlands line is like, and here the shoreline is basically the property boundary line for all intents and purposes where the wetlands line meanders all the way up to, in this area here as far as it is. But this is all vegetated anyway. I mean, again, this is all vegetated, this whole area. The only, this is lawn areas like over here. I assume you can see what I'm doing this, right?
You can't, sorry, Rob.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know, see, I don't have screen share anymore, I guess.
I believe this.
Yeah, that's, that's the vegetated line that comes down all the way. And as I said, just the area to the, what would that be, west of that shed that we have to be relocated and southwest of the shed, that's lawn, which I'm saying we'll more, more, be more than happy to cultivate that, or I mean, yeah, to let it grow or do whatever to put it in its natural state, so to speak.
Matt, could you show us on the map what Rob is saying he thinks should be natural? And the new, the, our recent code would.
Rob is, if I can summarize him correctly, he's saying that he should only have to abide by the 50-foot buffer that exists as it is today, which is from shoreline, which is here, this area to this dotted line, which is where the subdivision. As far as, well, I can't point to a single instance of what, on a lot line change or subdivision that we've done, that we haven't made comply with 325, which would be a 75-foot buffer from, from the edge.
Do all of those applications have, did they have lawn that existed prior to the adoption of the wetlands law?
Could you please show me, I can see where the, the 50-foot is. Where would the.
75-foot would be, see this, you see the line with the arrows on it right here, Gloria? It'd be 75 feet from that line, so it kind of varies.
It's shown on the, it's shown on that map, right there, that's 75 feet.
Okay, thank, thank you, I just.
Yeah.
So we're basically, it, it's much more than 25 feet.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Measured from a different place.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Not like of.
Is there anybody that wants to speak to this application?
I saw in the chat that Pam Harwood was, you know, had a question. This is in, this is Halsey Lane in Watermill. There is a Halsey Lane in both Hamlets, but this is.
Watermill.
It's, yeah, it's just, it's just behind the, the Watermill, Watermill, and the.
By the old, just down the road from the old Villa Maria.
Yeah, yeah.
Montauk Highway here and then Halsey Lane, which is off Montauk.
Right, right before Mohawk Lane, if you're familiar with that.
No, I, I actually, I have friends who live on the street, so.
So Matt, we will get a clarification as to which areas have to be revaged or left to their natural.
Correct, yeah.
That's all I'm asking for, thank you.
Yep.
Charles, can you just check in the chat room to see if anybody's there? If not.
If they wish to speak, they can just raise their hand.
Pamela Harwood just came on in the chat, what was that?
That was the question about the location of the Hamlet. Whether it was in Bridgehampton or Watermill.
I see. Okay, if there are no more questions and no one else wishes to speak, entertain a motion to close this 30-day written comment period by Dennis, second by Robin, all in favor.
Aye.
Post abstention, six in favor. Thank you, thank you, Rob.
All right, thank you. Have a good night. Be safe, everyone. See you, see you again.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
The Atlantic Golf Club Staff Housing, do we have jurisdiction?
We have proper notice, Madam Chair.
Great. And Claire, do you want to read that into the record?
Sure. Please take notice, in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order Number 202.1, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, May 13th, 2021 at 6:00 PM via video conferencing to consider the site plan application entitled Atlantic Golf Club Staff Housing. The subject project is for the Site Plan Special, Site Plan Wetlands Amendment Application to Construct a 6,500-square-foot building for employee housing accessory to an existing golf course, a 203-acre parcel located adjacent to Short Pond located in the CR80 zoning district on the north side of Scuttle Hole Road, 1040 Scuttle Hole Road, Hamlet of Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-49-7.1 by the order of the Planning Board, Town of Southampton, Gloria Burke, Secretary.
Thank you. Tony, are you representing the application?
You're muted, Tony.
We have Brian Matthews. Tony, you're muted. Just unmute, go down to the mute button and click on it. Should be in the lower left.
Your television remote, you must have it over here.
You see it on the lower left of your screen, on the Zoom screen? It says mute.
What do you want?
You're muted, Tony.
He knows, I think he knows.
Trying to unmute. Charles, can you unmute from there?
I'm trying. You got it.
I think he has it.
There you go. Okay.
Uh, turn your volume up if you can.
That's harder than unmuting.
You muted again.
Now you're muted again. Okay.
No.
Turn your volume up.
He's trying to do that.
Tony, if it's not working, do you have, do you have earbuds? If you have earbuds with a microphone, that works. I had the same issue with my laptop. It only works with my earbuds and my laptop.
That's good. So Mr. Bowman, are you here to speak to the application?
He is, uh, an opposition, I believe.
Opposition and
Yes, and so is Mr. Um
Matthews?
Yes, we're in opposition as well.
Okay.
Did we read the notice into the record?
I did, yeah.
Claire, maybe we can put up, um, the, uh, microphone.
This is the aerial. You can see that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then do you want to put that in the direction?
Ah, great.
Maybe you can call in with your phone.
Tony's been on before. I have difficulty.
Yeah, he's been on a lot of times.
There you go. Let me just, uh, see if I got your phone there. Yeah, I don't have your phone yet. Oh, I got you. Okay, hit, um, I think you have to hit star six. To talk. There you go. Yes. Turn your phone up a little, if you can.
Hopefully okay now?
Yes. Got it.
Okay.
It's always a way.
Okay, Tony, just present the application briefly.
Okay. So, um, sorry. Tony Panza, twenty-nine Turtle Pond Road. Rogers Park Architects. For Atlantic Golf Club. Presenting for a, uh, staff housing accessory to existing golf course. And what you have, I just want to make sure you, you're not getting reverb back.
Yeah. A little.
A little. But continue.
So the site plan that is up on the screen here now. Showing the location of the staff housing and let me just zoom in a little bit.
Should I zoom in?
Uh. Oh, you have it up, Claire, so I
I do.
So you don't have to worry about that. Just
Okay, so the, the application is for a sixty-five hundred square foot staff housing building. And important to note that the first floor area is thirty-six hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, I wanted to point that out because if I could actually share my screen, I would go into, uh, Google Earth. The properties adjacent, with the exception of the direct neighbor. Uh, these properties along Guyer and Scuttle Hole Road. Those first four footprints are between four and fifty-five hundred square feet. So I just didn't want the sixty-five hundred square foot to be a misrepresentation, misrepresentation of the size of this building. It's a, a thirty-six hundred square foot footprint. It would have, it would house sixteen individuals working at the Atlantic Golf Club, which, um, by bringing the staff to this location would allow them to then remove properties that they are renting, uh, elsewhere. And also the, this property, this project came about as a discussion when COVID had started in trying to make more personal space for the employees. Uh, rather than shared bathrooms. The, um, as you further see from the site plan there. We've tried to be uh, very sympathetic to the area around us in terms of the wetland to the, to the left on this drawing, which is Shorts Pond. To the right, we have a neighbor which we are um, set back from at a hundred and it's, it's actually on the next sheet, but I'll get to that. Hundred and fifty plus feet, I believe. When we previously came yeah, a hundred and fifty-one feet, nine inches from the property to the right. Previous discussions with the, the planning board as well as the adjacent neighbor had their attorney present. We talked about landscaping from that property and we, we do have a landscape plan in this set, a few pages down. Showing sizable, um evergreens along the property line to the right there. And then along the road, along Scuttle Hole Road. Originally, we were proposing to continue the type of planting which is on Scuttle Hole Road, which the property is down Scuttle Hole Road. Which is generally speaking, something along a, a green giant or a cedar. After presenting the project to uh, Marty Shay, he asked that we'd be a little more sympathetic to what the original plantings would have been along Scuttle Hole Road. Uh, and that would be to the left. And so we've changed it up a little bit. Still providing a, a hefty, uh, planting so that the building is minimally seen, but we introduce a few deciduous trees, which would be what you would see going down Scuttle Hole Road. Uh, another important item for both the club and when we were putting the project together. Was that as people come down Scuttle Hole Road, they can see into Shorts Pond. So that's why the plantings are held short here because there's, there's a view corridor. Um, if you're looking at the drawing there where the word scuttle and scuttle hole road is there's a view corridor that looks to Shorts Pond. And we wanted to retain, keep that open. Um, so that as you're traveling south, you would be, still have that vista. The set contains the floor plans for the buildings and also exterior elevations. The building is cedar shingle, white trim. Looking to, uh, fit in with the neighborhood as well as with Atlantic Golf Club. Um, if these are normally color. And if you want, I could share my screen to show it. And, uh, we've inserted some of the plantings. The trees that you see in the back. That's the existing, uh, wooded area that has a gully that we're, we don't want to disturb, disturb. We're building just in front of that.
Tony, can you talk about parking and number of cars and you had mentioned that some of the workers would be able to just walk?
Yeah, we
At the clubhouse.
Sixteen beds, so by the code sixteen parking spaces. But because some of the staff would not have cars. They would be walking and on the site plan, it shows the path where we would like to have them walk around. They would be not need a car. So on the site plan, we've shown that half of the parking spaces would be, uh, grass paved parking. So that we don't have to put as much asphalt down.
Tony, this is year round housing?
Well, the building is up year round. It wouldn't be heated. But maybe there'd be one person, two person at the most for year round. So it's generally seasonal. The club is open from around, um April to the, I believe the end of October.
Would you have any kind of onsite supervisor or anything like that?
Uh, well, the staff that would actually be in here would be, that wouldn't be of management level. But it would be of, uh, it's a nicer housing. It's a, it's a higher level. So this isn't um let's see, it's not, uh, you, you might have an, an someone that's, that's an assistant for the, for the pro shop. You might have someone that's at the front desk or maitre d.
Ultimately, how, how would you maintain, you know, occupancy levels? Like, you know, it'd be, you know, your neighbors are probably going to have some concerns about you know, overcrowding and such.
The, well, there's onsite housing now on the property.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's basically maintained with one person. There's strict rules to that. One person per room, one, one person per bedroom. So, and the reason for this housing is to create a, a better level of housing than what they currently have. So, uh, there would be no problem to an agreement of this is a sixteen bed facility for sixteen people.
And is it an IA system?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Any, any other questions from the board so that we can get into, uh, Mr. Bowman first?
Do you mind if I just share the screen a quick about the trails? I just wanted to put that up, the trail.
The trail connector.
Yeah. So this is the proposal from the applicant. Tony, can you speak to this a little?
Yeah, sure. So thi- this is showing the trail, which is just the extension of the trail at Shorts Pond. Where you see the trail easement, that runs along the northern edge of the property, runs for about a mile. And they're looking to get an extension so that anyone walking on the trail could get over to Scuttle Hole Road. The red that you see there and the orange, we went out one day with, uh, the trails committee and with a GPS. And just to see if it was possible to get from Scuttle Hole Road to the existing trail easement with one, without going into a neighboring property. And two, without going into the water. So we, that, that's what the red and the orange represent. And, uh, and that was while the project was in planning phase. So uh, the, the club is in favor of allowing the extension of that trail. Uh, and they feel that the, the darker blue location where you take the yellow to the darker blue. And that gets over to Scuttle Hole Road. It goes through an appropriate location in the gully and in the woods. And then out to a flat location on Scuttle Hole Road where there isn't a turn. There was some discussion with the, the trail group as to whether or not the light purple could be utilized. Um, but we think that the staff would be cutting a perpendicular to that to get to the clubhouse. They'd be going from the red building down. Uh, and it's also that light purple is going through the most, uh, heavily uh, briard and everything else closest to the wetland, within the wetland setback. Uh, and comes out onto Scuttle Hole Road, both where it starts to drop downhill and turn.
Okay, thanks. Okay, uh, Charles Bowman, would you like to, do you have a couple of questions for us?
Well, I don't have questions, Madam Chairperson. Um. Charles Bowman, Land Use Ecological Services, five seventy Expressway Drive South. Medford, New York. Representing, uh, the adjacent owners, Shorts Pond Associates on Shorts Pond. And also working in conjunction with Brian Matthews, who will also speak. Uh, and quite frankly, Madam Chairman and members of the board. We are quite amazed by this application and dumbfounded. Uh, the town of Southampton has always been very, very cognizant of how they protect natural resources. Shorts Pond is a extremely valuable wetland resource. And to have this proper, this proposal on a two hundred acre property. Putting a, what is really a transient motel, seasonal motel. Um, on a freshwater wetland. Uh, is just, I've, I've never seen something. I'll be honest with you. I've never seen such a, uh, proposal. Um, and I've have written a letter, which I hope the members have been, uh, provided with. I sent it to, uh, you all today. But to go down the certain points of the letter. Um, yes, there's been no, um, memorandum, uh, from the planning department on the impacts, uh, to the neighbors or to Shorts Pond. No one at the board has asked for Marty Shay to weigh in on an advisory report on the impact to the wetlands. Uh, it is a residential area, beautiful residential area. And it's pretty obvious that the golf course has put this as far away from their improvements a- as certainly as possible. You're building on steep slopes going down to the pond. Uh, you have an IA system, but there's been no, absolutely no data provided on existing groundwater quality. Because the IA system is great, that's wonderful. But freshwater wetlands and freshwater ponds are affected not just by nitrogen, but by phosphorus. We have a sixteen bed housing project. Uh, what I think the applicant has failed to indicate is sixteen beds, if you look at the floor plans, there's a double bed in each room. Uh, there is recreational areas in the basement. No recreation is shown outside, which certainly is going to happen. The parking, uh, he's saying that there's no one's going to use cars. No one's going to come visit these occupants. Uh, that is ridiculous. Um, I think we go on and on and say, there's laundry facilities in this facility. Uh, I would imagine, uh, as they are golf course workers for the most part, who I respect tremendously. Uh, but it's a dirty job. They're going to be doing lots of laundry. All these people. Uh, there's been no, uh, nitrogen or phosphorus loading, uh, or address on the laundry. Or the kitchens. Some of the rooms have kitchens in them. Some of the rooms have a, a, a community kitchen. None of this has been addressed, nor data provided on how those loadings are going to affect the groundwater of Shorts Pond. Shorts Pond, which I know very, very well. Because I've spent a lot of time there. Uh, in the, uh, environment, in the wetlands, observing the wildlife there has been used heavily by migratory waterfowl over the years. It has all sorts of great plants. It has all sorts of great plants and animals in it. And, uh, these types of facilities, this close, are going to increase the human activity tremendously. Even if this was a separate lot and you put one house on it, you know, the town would be looking very hard at putting, uh, restrictions on uses and the buffer areas. If you take a, I think the applicant had brought up that there was going to be a similar in size adjoining houses in the area. The adjoining houses near it have four to six bedrooms. They don't have 16 bedrooms and bathrooms and laundry facilities. Um, and, and, and I think, uh, Brian will speak to the legality of this situation. I'm speaking to the ecological impacts, uh, that, that are here. Uh, you have a 200 acre piece of property, 200 acres. You really have to put it on Schwartz Pond? We've looked at the entrance way to the Atlantic Golf Course. They have not been good stewards. You know, there is clearing that right down to the pond in many areas that I don't believe was approved when the golf course was approved. Uh, so, uh, just to, to put this many employees in this area in a residential area, it's going to adversely affect the adjoining properties and most importantly adversely affect the ecological health of Schwartz Pond with no data whatsoever, none. We have no data to be able to say, oh, the groundwater quality is X and what you're going to be doing is increasing nitrogen loading or phosphorus to Y or you're not. How can you make a decision? Uh, how can the town go forward with a project without asking for data that would be normal in any project, let alone one that is, doesn't fit with the zoning of the, of the adjoining areas and is on a very valuable wetland system? Lastly, what I, I think Brian will go into more detail. The town does have parameters for staff housing or agricultural staff housing. They say that that staff housing and the accessory structures and uses have to be located 200 feet from the side yard and 150 feet from a front yard. I don't see why the planning board would give approval to vary that standard. It's the only standard that is applicable from the town code to allow 44 feet to the parking area, which again, the, the amount of parking is, that has been estimated is ridiculous. No one's going to have any visitors. Everybody's going to be on bicycles and, uh, you know, no one, there'll be three or four cars there. You know, it's just something that is not feasible. So I would hope the board would, uh, look at this very hard, ask more data as in groundwater sampling, uh, what is the groundwater quality there now? What is the loading that they're, they're going to be providing for? And what type of uses are really there? How are they going to restrict it? I think a great question was raised on, on how are you going to police this? You know, how are you going to make sure that there's a double bed shown in all the floor plans? How are you going to make sure there's not 36 people there and all of their laundry? You know, and all of their cooking facilities, grease traps. I, I mean, I could go on and on and on. It's a motel that they're building on Scuttle Hole Road. And on that note, I will be more than happy to turn this over to Mr. Matthews, who can speak, I think, very clearly on the legality of this whole proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. All yours, Mr. Matthews.
Oh, uh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board. Brian Matthews, Matthews Kirsten Cooley, 241 Pantico Road, East Hampton, New York, 11937. Um, and we are here on behalf of our client, uh, Mary Ann Gabrielle, who's the owner of the property immediately to the north, um, of where this proposed, uh, structure, this proposed, I, I agree with Chuck, um, essentially this transient motel. Um, there was a, you know, an aerial image to put up before that I think graphically illustrates, um, what Chuck was talking about and what the plans and the aerials bear out, that this is a 202 plus acre property. Um, and the applicant has very clearly opted to place the, the burden of this structure and its impact, both on the environment and on the neighbors in the neighborhood, um, squarely off of their shoulders and squarely onto our client's shoulders and to the community as a whole. Again, this is essentially a transient motel that they're placing on, on Scuttle Hole Road. Um, and we believe that this application should be denied in full. Um, and certainly as the very least, we believe that the, the public hearing should be kept open and not just the, the public comment period until some of these significant questions that surround this, surround this proposal get addressed. Um, we put in a letter today as well, um, that I, I hope was circulated to the board. Um, if you've not yet had an opportunity to do that, I do ask that you do so. Um, where we go through, uh, the history of this property in some detail, obviously there's an extensive history there, but in essence, you know, there's, 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 there's staff housing that exists on the property as already. Um, that staff housing was granted twice by the zoning board of appeals through special exemptions, both in 1976 and 1977. So, you know, to the extent that that staff housing already exists, it wasn't approved or allowed as an accessory use to a golf course. It was allowed and approved as an accessory use, uh, to agricultural labor and agricultural housing, um, under the requirements of the town code. Um, we also share that same concern as to how an application of this scope of this magnitude and frankly, this out of lack for the, for the neighborhood and what's it's being permitted, um, which it's being sought to be permitted and the, the sensitivity of the property in question, that it's, it's gotten this far without a planning department memorandum, um, without any report regarding the impact to the wetlands. It almost seems as though this no applicant, no review was done of this application at all before it was scheduled for this public hearing. But, uh, you know, as a threshold matter, the critical question to be answered here is what's the legality of this application to begin with? You know, our client's principal objections and their objective in, in appearing here right now is to ask, under what code provision is this approval being, being sought? Um, this is a residentially zoned property, zone CR80. Um, and under the town code, single family residents are allowed, is already multiple residences on the property. Two family detached dwellings, multi-family dwellings for three families or more are expressly prohibited. That fact alone should preclude this application from going any further. You know, as it relates to the, the concept that there's been a, in discussions with, uh, with Claire, you know, to find, to find out about some, some background in this application and staff housing, we were advised that, you know, there was some building inspector determination years back, not on this property, that golf courses are allowed to have these kind of staff housing as accessory uses. However, based on our understanding and review of the record, no such determination's been made on this property, no such determination's been made part of the record here. Um, you know, when was this determination made? What was the scope of that determination? What limitations were placed on it? What property was that determination even based on? You know, when, even, even if there's a question about, even if a determination had been made that in excess, this golf course is going to have an accessory use, it remains the fact that that would essentially be an ultra virus determination by this board and the building inspector. The town code, in the town board in its legislative capacity determined that restaurants and agricultural uses can have onsite staff housing and under specific special exemption parameters. Neither this board or the building department has the ability to circumvent those legislative findings to say, well, these golf courses can have these staff housing, you know, accessory, accessory use staff housing with just simple site plan approval. It, it goes against every, every legal tenant and every zoning, uh, tenant that there is. But even if you look at the town code, when you look at the CR80 determination, the CR80 use tables, it says while, you know, access, accessory structures and uses are allowed, it prohibits those accessory structures and uses that are otherwise prohibited, which would be multi-family dwellings, which would be a transient motel. Um, so again, given the, the lack of permission to have this type of structure on this property and the lack of any information or write-up, um, it remains our view that this, this proposal is completely, completely prohibited and should go no further. And we also, you know, we adopt all of Chuck's concerns about the wetlands and we agree with his letter and we, you know, not going to repeat any of those, those, those comments here. Uh, you know, we adopted incorporated his letter into ours, but even aside from the illegality of what they're proposing here, it's very clear that, you know, we know that there's staff housing on other golf courses, but when you look at it, there, some of these golf courses, the bridge, for example, a property I'm intimately familiar with, you know, that staff housing is tucked way up in the woods. It's not a motel-like structure fronting on Scuttle Hole Road with one of the major thoroughfares in town, um, both from a use standpoint and an aesthetic standpoint. Um, and when you look at the site plan standards in the town code, this board is obligated to take, you know, the health, safety, welfare, the comfort and convenience of the public in the neighborhood into consideration in reviewing any site plan application. Here, the traffic, where's the traffic study to show that there'll be no impact? Just, you can't just say there'll be no traffic and no one will drive there. There's parking requirements in the code for a reason, so you don't have to take an applicant's word that there won't be cars and no one will drive there. Um, where, how, it undercuts that no one's going to come visit these people at their summer job at the Atlantic Golf Course. It's just not reasonable. Um, where's the screening between our neighboring property? It's completely inconsistent with the area. These are either agricultural land or single family residences. This property does not fit the bill. And, you know, to the extent that they want to classify this and try to latch on to their prior agricultural housing determination, well, I don't think that's proper, but if they want to do that, they can try to do that. And if they choose to do so, they'll have to go to the zoning board because this application doesn't meet the 200 and 150 foot setbacks, um, that are required under the town code. It, this, this application places an outrageous burden, not just on the natural environment, but on our client. Um, it does not meet the site plan standards in addition to being completely prohibited. Um, and we join in, you know, not only asking to be denied, but we join in Chuck's request that a lot more review of this application be done, um, and certainly prior to the close of any public hearing concept, uh, to allow these issues to be vetted in the proper form. Thank you.
Is there anyone?
Madam Chairperson, Chuck Bowman, I, I do have, uh, one of the owners of Schwartz Pond Associates who would like to have a, uh, brief word with the board as well, if that's okay.
My name is Jane Held and I represent Schwartz Pond Associates, uh, along with my two sisters. Um, I'm going to be very brief in my comments. Uh, my family has owned the property since the mid eighties and we were very shocked and outraged to see this application come before the board because we feel it equates, as has been said, to building a transient motel along one of the most scenic roads and one of the most beautiful ponds. The vistas across Schwartz Pond everyone mentions when they drive down Scuttle Hole Road. Our family feels we've been great stewards of the pond as we have preserved a large portion of our property when we developed our land through, um, a large easement area that we agreed to when we did our subdivision. Uh, if this application is ever going to be considered, we feel the applicant has over 200 acres that they can work with and not cited in this sensitive location. We feel to, to consider putting a structure like this is wrong because it is really a strictly residential area that surrounds it. And it creates a terrible hardship in particular to Gabrielli family and also to our two pond front lots. Uh, we don't feel it's gone through the proper channels for review as we understand it at this point. Uh, I did run into one of the ZBA members and was curious if they had any knowledge of this application and they had not heard anything about it. And as I spoke to many members of the community, nobody had heard about this project. So it's hard to understand how this got this far without anybody in the community being aware of this application. It feels as though they've done this in a manner to sort of fast track their application without really proper review. And we ask that the planning board, um, keep this application open for more comments and for more review so we can have a better understanding. And the last thing I want to say, which I was not aware of and I'm not totally clear on, is, um, Mr. Panza mentioned a, a walking trail and it looks like the walking trail is going to go along the side of Schwartz Pond where my family has property and closer to the Gabrielli family. And, you know, they have plenty of property on the other side of the pond. Everything that Atlantic Golf Course is doing is doing to minimize the impact on their property and maximize the impact on the neighboring properties. And I really hope the board looks at that and recognizes that that is what they are doing. And with that, I thank you for listening and I just hope the board will consider keeping this open for further comments and review. Thank you.
I have a few people from the audience.
Yes, I'm here.
Put your video on, please.
Yes.
And next is Pamela Harwood.
Hi, my name is Catherine Pruitt and I reside at 1043 Scuttle Hole Road. I am also representing tonight my neighbor Sandy and Nakum Gross, who reside at 1011 Scuttle Hole Road. They were unable to be here due to illness in the family. Their sentiments are the same as mine. Um, I, I agree with Mr. Bowman. I agree with Mr. Matthews. I also agree with the statements made by Ms. Held. Uh, I have lived in this area my entire life and Scuttle Hole Road has always been considered one of the most beautiful and scenic areas because of the ponds. Um, when, when I heard of this project, I was taken aback because while, um, the architect mentioned that it has a, a, um, square footage, footprint of 3,600 square feet, it's a behemoth of a structure to be put on this piece of this plot of land. And, uh, I think several of the other speakers have said that it's just, it, it, it's unbelievable that this would be even considered to be put on Scuttle Hole Road facing, and it's, it is a motel, transient motel. Um, it's going to sit vacant during the winter. Uh, one or two people in there still isn't. Guess my biggest concern, and I'm across the street, is the, the, the nature of the safety in the area and the quality of life. Quality of life for the direct neighbor, neighbors will have to deal with multiple people because golf club employees work hard and play hard. They drink, there's drugs involved, it's a party. Um, I think some of you may already know this is, it's just the culture. It's, they have a good time. So we are now putting a structure in a residential area where there's going to be 16 beds, which on a Friday night after work is going to be 32 people, maybe 48 people. There's going to be music and parties. There's going to be garbage. There's going to be loud noise all night, car doors slamming. These are the things that concern me. In addition to the safety and security of the area, we are now introducing a very large amount of people that are proposed to be walking to work through the woods. Um, it, it's, it's very concerning to me, very concerning. Thank you.
So.
Pamela Harwood, um, Chairwoman of the Bridgehampton Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, we, uh, we're not intending to involve ourselves in this application. We're not intending to involve ourselves in this application because usually we're used to a property owner, commercial property owner, trying to get out of building affordable housing or employee housing, so we were kind of happy to see that this initiative was being taken. However, I'm listening to all this, and I also had a few people reach out to me about this with concern. And I must admit, listening to the application, I am surprised that there would be 16 bedrooms, each having its own bathroom. An en suite arrangement for employee housing does seem pretty extravagant for employee housing, it does make one wonder about the application, and I also, we're very used to seeing drawn site plans, and then in the end, you cannot get a sense of what this really looks like. So I am concerned, what is this really going to look like from the road? It's all nice to see leafy trees and all that, but we know that that may not be what happens. So I'd like to see a photographic rendering, and with computers, one can do that these days, and I would like to respectfully request that the planning board keep the public portion open and perhaps have another public hearing so that I can reach out to the other CAC members for a discussion now that I'm a little bit more familiar with what this application actually entails. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I may, I certainly would request that the hearing be continued and that the applicant be requested, if they want to proceed with the application, to provide the basic information as far as groundwater quality, wetland impacts that are required by the State Environmental Equality Review Act, so that we are able to analyze this in a reasonable and expeditious manner to see what impacts this application would actually have. And I believe that that is a responsibility of the board, and I think you're required by state law in order to do that. And to date, none of this information has been provided. Thank you.
If I may also, Madam Chair, very quickly, I would echo that same sentiment for, but for different reasons. As I mentioned, you know, there's nothing in the record to show how this is even, under what basis this is even proposed, and it makes it impossible, not just for the board, but for members of the public, to have, to vet this, to give any idea about why they claim this is allowed, why it wouldn't be allowed, and absent that information, this kind of public hearings are, don't really serve the role that they're meant to serve of having an informed public show up and give their view of an application. So I would echo that this public hearing be continued and not just a continued public comment period. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, if I may, there's a dentist who's asking to be heard.
Dennis?
Dennis, a dentist?
I got him.
Yeah.
Thanks, Charles.
If I could, if I could speak just before Dennis speaks, that's Dennis Susskind.
Okay, go ahead, Tony.
Just to respond to, I would first, I'd like to start off with saying, if everyone speaking could stick to facts rather than creating what I would call inflammatory comments, this is not a transient motel, which for some reason has been a reoccurring theme. This is staff housing for the Atlantic Golf Club. The Atlantic Golf Club has staff housing now, and they have staff that are off-site. And then we can go back and there's no history that any neighbors or any other incidents have had with Atlantic staff housing employees. The Atlantic Golf Club would and does maintain control over its staff. There was some suggestion it would be the culture of party because that is what people know of, people that work for golf courses are that way. Well, it's an inflammatory comment, it's really not polite, it's not the nature, and it's not going to be a party house. This is staff housing for people that are unable to live in our area. We all know very well what happens with the trade parade. If you're trying to bring in staff that are working at a restaurant, possibly they're working in the kitchen, they could be sitting in traffic two hours coming in. So I'd like to try to stick to facts and not degrade the people that are working at the Atlantic Golf Club. It's not polite. So I don't see any issue on the safety and security side. Again, it's known that this is on the Atlantic Golf Club's property, and it will be maintained to the highest levels that Atlantic Golf Club does now. The idea of it being a transient motel, this is staff that come in in April and leave at the end of the season. This isn't coming and going. As far as the neighbors that are in the area and some other thoughts about plantings, the current homes on Scuttle Hole Road to the west of Scuttle Hole Road, you can't see because they've chosen to put up Green Giants and everything else, so that you can't see the home, you can't see the vista. The only vista that exists on Scuttle Hole Road is to the agres across the street. So we're hearing comments from neighbors that we're ruining the vista. Well, we've said we're going to continue the vista to Shorts Pond, even though that's on the Atlantic Golf Club's property, we want to offer that, we want that to be there. And with consideration from what Marty had suggested, we wanted to change the plantings from what others have, which is basically creating an ally of Green Giants. Another comment about grease traps, about kitchens everywhere, the plan shows kitchenettes, kitchenette is a sink and a refrigerator, a toaster and a microwave. Again, we're talking about staff here, there aren't parties being thrown on there, if I want to cook some pasta, I'm going to cook some pasta. But this isn't a commercial kitchen. If we have 16 beds, there's 16 staff. We're talking about the footprints of adjacent homes. If the footprint is 5,000, that could be a 10,000-square-foot home, a suggestion that there's four to six bedrooms in there, and that somehow this structure would have a much greater impact than those homes. Well, we're saying one bed per room in that house, and we're saying one person in that bed. In the bed that has six bedrooms, there could be two people in each, or 12, we're very close to the same size. So, and one other item, the extension of the trail, that's not something that Atlantic Golf Club is putting in, that's an ask from the Town of Southampton Trails Committee. There is a trail that exists along the north side of Atlantic Golf Club, it's almost a mile long, it's been there since the original approval for the Atlantic Golf Club, almost a mile long, and we're just politely allowing them to continue that over to Scuttle Hole Road. There's obviously a number of other comments, and if there's written, if there's letters that are written, we'd be glad to respond back to those. We feel that we've taken into consideration the self, safety, health, the wetlands, the reason why we have a minimal disruption to the land, the reason why we've moved so far from the wetlands. And the location is, so, is, we say that it, you say it's a 200-acre property, and we're looking for a parcel on that that we can build, and we feel that since this is a field, we're not taking down trees, we're not going into the wetland, that we do feel that this is the correct location for it. Mr. Dennis Susskind is also in attendance, is a member of the board at the club, and would like to say some items.
Please, Dennis.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
First of all, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and for those of you that I have known for many years, hello, those who are in town hall and those who are speaking against this project. Let me just first say that the Atlantic Golf Club, from its inception, has been very concerned with the, with the land, the preservation of the land, the, of putting the right chemicals into the ground, that we were honored for that purpose in that, in that regard. And I personally, when I was on the town board, received many, several honors on a national basis for what I cared about and what I tried to preserve. If you look at the picture behind my head, that is the house I owned for 35 years, it was on Kellis Pond, and so I'm very used to preservation of land and very indebted or very dedicated to the preservation of the water in the area, and I know it very well. There were so many comments that I can't, couldn't write them all down.
Cynthia, please.
I have a house full of dogs, I'm sorry. The, in terms of, there was a comment about the path, that path is on our property, it's not on, it's not on anybody else's property. I would expect, I would, I would expect that, not expect, we would insist, that our employees use that path to get into the areas that they work. It could be the kitchen, it could be as a waiter or a waitress, it could be on the grounds crew. And so it's not, we're not going to be, they're not going to be driving from this facility into the club. The whole purpose is so they don't have to drive from eight miles or 10 miles or 15 miles a day to get to work, but to make it convenient for them, keep them off the road and keep them happy. The aesthetics, we are very, very concerned about that, and we try, we try to preserve as much as we can. We do have photo renderings for the person who asked, they of course have always been available. This project didn't start yesterday, it started many, many months ago, as the planning board knows. I reached out several months ago to my neighbor, our neighbor to the west, whose father I knew, Sale Borwood, who was one of the last farmers who had cows on his property, to show her the plans of what we were about to do, to see if she had any comments or any concerns, it's something we could do to be a good neighbor. She's really the only, they're the only neighbor adjacent to us. I showed her and her daughter the plans and her husband, I gave them the opportunity, I left the plans with them, and I said, you know, please call me if you have any concerns. I reached out to her again in several weeks, I called her several times, she never called back, so until their attorney showed up, I didn't know what they felt at the time. I'm chagrined to find out that they really find it unacceptable to them. We are very concerned with the vista, the vista from people driving by, and any other vista that we might interrupt, which we would never, which we would never do. I also find it disingenuous to call this a motel, it is anything from a motel. We monitor the people that stay there, we have a ground superintendent on the ground, a very serious person who's on the, lives on the grounds, and he monitors all our facilities where people sleep. And we have never, ever had a problem with a neighbor, with the town, with the police or anybody else in the 30 years that we've been there. So, you know, I found the comment, I think I wrote it down, drugs and parties, that's not about us, we don't do drugs and parties, and we don't allow drugs and parties. Now, in terms of where else this property, if you know our property, which some people obviously don't, there is no other place. This is the obvious location for housing for our employees. The, I think that Mr. Matthews misquoted the code, I don't want to say I'm an expert on the code, but I know a little bit about the code, and you, you guys obviously are experts, and you'll look at his comments and find out, I believe, that he misquoted the code. I think I'll leave it at that. I just wanted to emphasize to the planning board that we care about our neighbors, we care about this town, we're not going anywhere, many of us have been here for many, many years, and we will be responsive, as we have been responsive, to the suggestions that the planning board and the staff have made, to anything you think that we should be doing different. We're not here to have a fight, we're here to get something done which we think is good for us, we think it's good for the community to have employee housing, and, and so anything that comes back from the planning board, as we have been responsive, we will continue to be responsive, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions the planning board members have of me.
Thank you, Dennis. There was someone there, just Mr. Redman?
I'll get him.
He's, he's on, he just has to unmute.
Right, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairperson and the town board. I live at 278 Millstone Road, just off of Scuttle Hole Road, and it, it does seem to me that there's plenty, you know, there's a lot of property at the Atlantic Golf Course, and they're asking us, really the entire Hamptons public, to take on this sacrifice on the most beautiful piece of road that there is in the Hamptons, when there is plenty of places that they can put it on their property. They might have to, to put it on a putting green, that's, but they, they want to cut their costs for renting staff housing, they may have to sacrifice. But to put something like this right in front of the public, this is a very well-traveled but beautiful piece of property, most beautiful agricultural road in the Hamptons. It seems to me that this is not the place to put staff housing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Just for clarification, this is not saving us money, this is costing us a lot of money because we think we're doing the right thing. I understand his opinion, I'm giving my opinion, I'm telling you the facts about in terms of saving money. Thank you very much.
Charles, is there anyone in there else in there with a hand?
I see no other hands.
No more hands?
I see no other hands.
No other hands.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, who is this?
It's Charles Bowman, you know, if you're in it, Jane Held would like to have one more thing to say, and I would like to, I would certainly like to just speak to Mr. Susskind, because what we've been asking for is, is data. There's no data with this application on what the impacts are going to be. So I think that's very important, that if he wants to proceed with this, you know, the club is going to have to provide data on groundwater equality, habitat, what wildlife utilizes this, how is the phosphorus and nitrogen going to affect Shorts Pond? This is not anything to do with the occupants of it, it has to do with how it's going to adversely affect that very valuable wetland area, and it's something that is asked for from everyone. We're not picking on Atlantic Golf Course, but the science is the science, and he should be able to have that information provided if they want to proceed in this direction. And I'll tell you, this type of, just my gut feeling, is that when you look at the intensity of the development, and even it's an IO system, that you're going to have significant impacts to Shorts Pond.
Okay, you know, we've heard from, from all of you several times now, we do have other applications, so I really will entertain somebody who hasn't spoken, but we really do have to move on. We will hold this open, so. Tony, did you want to say any closing words?
Yeah, I was just going to mention that, to Charles's comments there, when we selected this location for the staff housing, it was to be as light on the land as possible. The existing field that we're placing, we're not taking down any trees, we're working in the, in the field, which at times has been used for overflow parking and for, and for other items, not for the club uses, for outside uses. The IA system, something that was very important to the club, we wanted to make certain that we're not affecting Shorts Pond, the same thing with all the drainage, and the reason why we built substantially outside of the wetland setback. Something that I think, that I would like to point out is that I believe there are, there- I believe there are, there are members of the public that are on, that are listening and have spoken that own the lots adjacent to this area, and they're speaking about it, and they're commenting that by the staff housing going in, it's gonna have substantial effect on Short's Pond. The greatest effect that's happened to Short's Pond over the past twenty years is the is the construction of the new residential lots, which exist to the northeast. That whole area previously drained down into Short's Pond, and there's the gully which is behind where this structure's going. The level of Short's Pond has dropped over the years because that water is no longer flowing as each of those lots. We're building on a previously disturbed. Those areas there, which have wooded wooded areas and everything, there's considerably more impact when each of those residential lots are going in, which are taking up. I gave the square footage of the house. I didn't give the square footage of the disturbed area with the pool and everything else as to their impact and that those residences. Uh that's my concern that the public is coming after Atlantic Golf Club or putting in something that has a greater benefit because it's staff housing, when the construction that would occur on the residential lots actually has a much greater impact on Short's Pond, especially given the the practices that the superintendent at the Atlantic Golf Club uses for the golf course are much different than the practices that Chem Lawn and Chem Turf and everyone else use when they're taking care of the yards of the much larger homes. We don't have a maintained lawn at the staff housing. We're intending to lo- to tread on this as lightly as possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Um so we'll leave this open, uh this hearing open till um when is our next uh session, Claire?
Twenty seventh of May.
Twenty seventh. Uh you can send your letters and your comments into the planning board. They're all read, and they're all registered and logged in. And we'll see if we can't get some information. Dennis, did you?
Uh when we, when we hold the hearings open, though, we typically, we typically hold them for thirty days.
Oh, that's right, right, because of the new, for the COVID restrictions.
Are we?
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Are we, are we keeping, are we gonna, is this gonna be held over for another public hearing, or is just a public comment period?
This, no, this hearing is 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 gonna be held open, so.
Okay.
Hold it open. You've requested that?
That was my, yeah, yeah.
Then we've heard you. We've heard you, Mr. Matthews.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Oh, Ju- you mean June tenth, okay.
Yeah, so it has to be June tenth, you know. We have certain time uh frames now that have been altered because of COVID. So um June tenth, get your letters in. Uh we'll try to get some more information from Tony, uh vis a vis some of your questions, and uh we'll try and move forward. But thank you for coming, and thank you for expressing um your point of view.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you very much.
So we're moving on to um our last third and last application, Sag Harbor Antique Fire Truck Museum.
This is me, Madam Chair. Did we have a vote on the adjournment?
We did not, though. Now you do have to.
We need to adjourn. Do we need a vote on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so a motion to adjourn it, Dennis, Secretary of Public Glory and all in favor. Opposed, extension six in favor.
Thank you. Thanks, Patty.
So we have uh proper notice on this, Kathleen?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Claire, are you gonna read something into the record?
I am. Let's make sure I have everyone. Uh please take notice that in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order number two oh two point one, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty one, at six P M via video conferencing, to consider the site plan application entitled Sag Harbor Antique Fire Truck Museum. The site plan, special exception application, is to convert an existing twenty four hundred square foot farm stand into a museum on a thirty five thousand seven hundred and eleven square foot parcel located in the agricultural overlay district situated in the C R eighty zoning district at thirty five Millstone Road, Hamlet and Bridge Hampton, Suffolk County tax number nine hundred dash fifty dash one dash three. I order the planning board, Town of Southampton, Gloria Burke, secretary.
Thank you. And who is here to speak to this application?
Um Charles, I'm sorry, did I not say, uh it's Ed Dearman and um maybe Dennis Downs?
They're coming in.
Thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
But I don't believe again you can see me.
But we can see you.
Not sure how this camera works. So uh, well, we're gonna have to forego the camera. I'm sorry. I, my uh, my apologies on that.
I'm a twelve-year-old.
I know. I'm getting, I'm getting too old for that. Do you like me to start?
Yes, if you want me to share the screen, do you all put this plan up if you wanna speak, Ed?
Yes.
Okay. There's the plan, and here's the area, just reminds everyone, it's Scuttle Hole Road, Millstone, and Guyer Road is in the rear. Go to the north.
As you're aware, uh uh we've been uh at this now for uh going on two years now. It'll be two years, I believe, when we first started uh in July. Uh we met with uh the uh Building Inspector, Mike Benacazza, at the time, and uh we started the process of obtaining a special exception permit on this. Mr. Falcowski, the owner, uh is uh looking to uh get out of the farming business, the farm stand business, and he is not uh interested in maintaining that site uh as it was for all of those years, but dating back to, I believe, the early nineteen eighties. Uh we entered into a discussion with him, and uh uh we started working on this particular plan. Mr. Falcowski has worked this uh farm stand uh for about four months of the year. Uh the balance of the year, uh the interior was used just for general storage uh of equipment and things of that nature. We went to the planning board and we had some initial uh uh feedback. Uh and you asked, or several of the board members asked for some individual items to be included in the plan. Uh we added a couple of windows. Uh we discussed adding a cupola to the top. Uh and um again, no signs, no lights, virtually no changes outside the building at all. We're not looking at changing the exterior of the building. We're looking at uh just repurposing the interior for our, uh we have uh four antique fire trucks that we that we need to find a home for. Uh they are now currently stored, uh both two of them, the rolling stock that we have uh that we use for funerals and parades and musters and things of that nature, uh are actually stored in Bridge Hampton at uh uh at two locations. Uh so um I'm getting a message here. I don't know if that helps. Oh, there we go. But uh, thank you very much, whoever sent me that message. Uh so uh we're looking at uh putting all of these uh trucks together in one location, uh and so we can store them properly and work on them. One of the trucks that we have is in uh is in a dismantled condition uh sitting in the Village of North Haven at at a marina there, which we want to get out and start working on. So we're looking for a location. This really uh fits fits our needs. Uh it's uh, it's the perfect size for us. And uh we hope that uh we could uh move this toward some sort of uh conclusion. Just a couple of other comments. We did meet, one of the suggestions was from the uh, from the planning board was that we run this by the new building inspector, Mr. O'Rourke. So we did that, and he uh made a determination that there wasn't enough of them to use in use. It was basically truck storage. So what we did was we, again, redesigned the interior of the building uh to uh put some of our uh excess uh historical items in there, as well as the equipment that uh we have associated with our needs. Uh and he agreed that uh we would, we would meet the museum uh definition in the town code. Uh the other issue is uh, again, we're we're trying to uh assemble these pieces uh in in a location, and if you uh are familiar with Sag Harbor recently, uh especially with the seven eleven issue uh on Main Street, uh it's very difficult for anyone to find allowable space. And uh Mr. Falcowski has been really good to us uh in uh working with us to get this plan through. Again, the seven eleven property is is indicative of what's happening uh in our little village, where eleven or so tenants are now looking for places. I think you're going to find the same thing uh in Bridge Hampton when the agway building uh uh process comes before your board. Uh there's about another eleven or fifteen uh people who rent space there that are suddenly looking for uh a a alternate site. And I think it was Mr. Finity who asked the question, well, have we looked at other spots? Uh we've looked up uh uh Route one fourteen into East Hampton. We've looked at places on Butter Lane. Uh we've looked uh uh certainly in the few areas that exist in New York. Uh and we've, we've really looked around. We've even looked at uh utility property around there. Uh like uh uh the uh lighting company may have uh excess property, or the Water Authority may have excess property as some of their uh sites, and uh uh we were unable to uh get or generate any support for anything like that. So we really have been looking. This, again, fits our bill, and uh we are, again, looking to uh to move this along, so um I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. This is the second public hearing, so I I I believe that you're more than familiar with the the issues that we have here.
Um, well, and and you know that when you were before us, when we had some sessions with you, that um this is a special exception application, and that you, um the application has to meet those in order for us to approve them. So I just wanna clarify, this museum use, that it was not a museum, and now it's a museum?
Well, we we initially, uh probably about ten years ago, when we started this not-for-profit organization, it's a group of eleven firemen uh who were involved with this. We have a team of about uh probably between ten and fifteen people who uh are willing to work on these trucks along with us. But we, uh again, because of the zoning uh issues throughout the town, we we uh uh through our attorney, Dennis Downs, set this organization up, has a museum before the New York State Education Department, uh which would allow us to really move to uh most, if not all, of the uh zoning codes through either the village or the town. Now, when we uh first went to, again, Mr. Benacazza, he said it qualifies. Mr. O'Rourke uh said no, so we had to make it more of a museum. It's not our biggest thrust. Uh we don't wanna say uh open a museum for like daily uh participation or even weekly participation. Uh our main thrust is the uh storage and repair uh of the trucks. We do show them at at other locations. We don't want to uh create an issue with this particular site where we have, we generate additional traffic. We've been limited to uh four parking spaces. Uh and again, we don't want to have something running here that is in any way, shape, or form causing trouble for the neighbors. You won't even really see us unless the doors are open. And if somebody wants to pull in and look at the trucks and whatever while we're working there, that's fine. We may have a school group come uh throughout the year. We do have uh uh we do normally bring our trucks to the schools during the course of a year. Uh with the pandemic, I I believe that that might be starting up again a- after the fall. Uh but we don't want to use the museum issue or the museum component as the lead thing here. It's not. It's it's a very uh miniscule part of what we do, but it allows us uh if you look at the map and the survey there, the site plan, it allows us to utilize this site legally.
And there are no, it's my understanding that you have some land in Sag Harbor.
We do, we do. It's.
Where you could build um a small building for this?
Yeah, we 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 do have a small site there. Uh it's uh, it's uh directly over uh Liggett Creek. Liggett Creek, which is a dividing line between the village and the town, goes right through the middle of the property. And because of the setbacks, it's a difficult property to develop, and we've had uh a difficult time getting approvals for this. Uh it's taken some time to do that, and we're now actually uh meeting again with the Town Community Preservation Fund to see if uh the the better use of that property might be uh open space as you drive into the Village of Sag Harbor, which we kinda call the property the gateway to Sag Harbor.
If, are you willing to place limitations on public access? In other words, restrict the amount of people and times and terms that can visit the museum?
Very definitely.
Okay.
Also, we uh made the recommendation that you close off the Scuttle Hole Road exit and not use that because it's a very sensitive and dramatic piece of property with roads on three sides, and there's a lot of traffic that moves on Scuttle Hole, and so.
You're correct i- in in saying that, and uh and it's my uh my uh uh mistake not to include that in some of the things that were talked about, but we are very, very amenable to uh closing off that access to Scuttle Hole Road.
Don't get a clarification. I'm 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 a little confused. If we don't call this a museum, what is it? Is it to, can you use the property for what you wanna use it if you do not call it a museum?
Uh uh again, I'm not an attorney, but I would suspect that we would have a problem with that, and that we would have to go before the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, I I'm feeling a little uncomfortable because he's not an attorney. And the direction that the questioning is going in terms of use, what it intends to be used for, what is legal for it to be used for, I'm feeling uncomfortable because we're calling it one thing to be able to use the property. We don't intend to use it for what we're calling it, and we are using it for a purpose that it's not zoned for. Um I I think I'm feeling very uncomfortable right now continuing in this or having um the gentleman who's not an attorney continuing to answer. I I don't know if anybody else is feeling uncomfortable, but I am.
Me, I am.
Well, we've had this issue with the museum.
I know, but now we have a decision by our buildings.
Right.
Right. Right, so so the form, so the former building inspector felt, if, I believe, the former building inspector felt that uh the use as proposed fit within the the definition and the category that they were seeking. The new building inspector has felt that the applicant had to make some further accommodations so that they could fit within that uh museum and storage category, and so they've done that.
Right, I think, I think.
Museum, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, museum also does what's called archiving, storage. And that's what, a a lot of what I think the Chief Building Inspector was relying on. Storage being a component of museums. Not everything's on display, but here he has the display. He has a place for the people to come and and look, but the storage is a component of that.
Right. So you know, because it's public record that the Bridge Hampton Fire Department is dead against this. You know that?
Yes, I I read their letter. Uh their letter uh seems to uh uh pertain more to fundraising concerns uh that we have there. And the fact that I think they use the term annex. And the fact that I think they use the term annex for Sag Harbor. This is not an annex in any way, shape or form. And we have also agreed that we would conduct no fundraising out of this site. So I don't, I don't see where where there is any real concern that needs to be dealt with other than the fundraising. I think that's the major issue. And, and we, we have stated that we are not going to do that and, and you can, you folks can put that in as a condition of, of approval. I mean, I'm not, I'm, you know, and it's funny, in today's mail, I got my Bridge Bucks certificate here, application. So, I mean, we, we, we work together quite well and, and I think that the Bridge Hampton issue, Bridge Hampton Fire Department issue deals mainly with fundraising and, again, we're not doing any of that at this site.
There are no further questions right now for the board. Let's open it up to the public. Pamela? Charles, can you let Pamela in?
Yep.
Thank you.
I, I think she's in already.
She's.
Yeah, she was before. Pamela, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, good. Can you, do you have your video on?
Yes, but I can't get it off. You cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
How about that?
Start my video. Okay, there we go. Thank you very much.
Good.
Pamela Harwood, Chairwoman of the Bridge Hampton Citizens Advisory Committee. This will be the second time I'm speaking at a public hearing about the, this application, but the application has changed over the years. I would like to start saying the Bridge Hampton C A C is absolutely one hundred percent against this application, this use. There has been a long history of uncertain, uncertainty about the, what this is actually going to be used for. The entity itself who's applying is, is an antique fire truck museum, Inc. When you, in two thousand and eleven, according to the local newspapers, you began applying for a museum in Sag Harbor Village. Sag Harbor Village, as we all know, has stricter review boards than Southampton Town and they rejected the proposals for a museum there, I believe, because the size was too large for their standards. Now, it's starting in twenty, late twenty nineteen, I believe, you've come to Bridge Hampton to apply. Perhaps because Southampton Town is more lenient, maybe, I don't know. But at first you applied for just a storage shed. In an agricultural overlay district, which is just agricultural and residential use, the former building inspector or said, no, that is not acceptable, a storage shed. Only a museum can enable you to get a special exemption. So now you're coming back and saying, no, change of mind, we're going to be a museum after all. Oh, as your name implies. And this sounds to us as if, well, just tell me how I should apply so that I can get what I want. And that should not be how things are done. And here it says, our organization proposes to store, refurbish and maintain our three entry fire trucks, what you're saying four now. We plan to add a gallery of historic pictures, memorabilia and displays that honor our two hundred and seventeen year history, which is in Sag Harbor. So our position from the beginning is that you should find a place in Sag Harbor to store your Sag Harbor antique fire trucks. It is very, I think it's wrong to compete with the Bridge Hampton Fire Department. And a museum is supposed to be open. I think adding a few photos on the walls is not a museum. You're just doing that so you can say you're a museum. Because you say all you really want to have is a storage shed, but you're not allowed to have a storage shed of fire trucks in agriculture and residential zoning. So I think this is all very disingenuous. It's not just me. I'm actually speaking for the entire committee. And we feel quite strongly about this. You also say that the impact, the reduction to less than one hundred visitors per year, as if that's a good thing. Well, normally it would be a good thing as far as traffic. But the site was formerly a much loved agricultural use farm stand and it did have a lot of traffic, but it was such a vital part of the community. We liked that part of it. So just reducing traffic is a benefit, in this case, is not a benefit for us because this is not going to be an integral part of the Bridge Hampton community for agricultural uses. I know that we would have loved to have the C P F buy this property, having a shed and a structure on the property is a problem in, in that regard, but in some way, we would like to see this being maintained in, in some sort of agricultural use. And we feel that this, th- this whole application is inappropriate for Bridge Hampton. It's inappropriate at this site. And just saying that it's going to be a museum, but it's really a storage shed, I think that Ms. Long, you have hit the nail on the head and so has Ms. Burke. This is, it's all being done with smoke and mirrors to get this application through and, and we are one hundred percent against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Someone else want to speak?
May I just have one comment, Ed?
Sure.
I, I don't know the, the comparison of the various municipalities, zoning and planning and various advisory boards, how they stack up to each other, the village versus the town. But I can tell you that in Sag Harbor, we went through six various boards, four in the village, the state D E C and the Suffolk County Board of Health. And I believe in two thousand and eighteen, we received all six approvals from every unit that needed to review that property in Sag Harbor. We're just trying to be better stewards of it and we think that maybe the C P F would be a better fit. And, and that's why we're looking at other sites.
Madam Chair, Mister Res, Renwick would like to be heard on this application.
Oh, okay, yes, Mister Renwick.
Yes, hi, I live at two seven eight Millstone. My question is, what is a special exception? And does it get the subsequent owner of the property any closer to an actual zoning change? Because this is zoned as agricultural. The owner, current owner has been paying taxes of very little money because it's agricultural. And it should stay agricultural. Does a special exception make it any easier to change the zoning is my question.
Claire, you want to answer that?
No, it's not a zone change. It, the zoning remains the same. Museums are just permitted by special exception as a use. If they meet certain standards.
Exception, does it last for an indeterminate amount of time or?
It would if the use remains the same, yes.
Okay.
They, they, they are issued a museum use with the condition, any conditions the planning board might place on the property.
Right, okay, conditions like no public events, no signage, no lighting.
Right, we've heard some offers of no fundraisers, limits on hours of operation, closure, you know, closure of the curb cut. That would all be part of that site plan.
And when you go through a special exception application, Mister Renwick, there are special standards, additional standards that you have to meet.
Such as?
Community character.
Yeah. On the second, if you call me tomorrow, I can give you a fuller explanation.
I will. Thank you.
That would be fun.
Okay, are there any other questions? Any other comments? I just wanted to ask one thing, Mister Dearman. You still have the property in Sag Harbor?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and what I think you heard, I heard you say it's been approved to, to actually build the building.
Yes, we had approvals from all six. The Harbor Committee, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board and as well as the D E C, the Board of Health and the Architectural Review Board as well.
Is there a reason why you just didn't put up some kind of storage building there?
Well, cost for one. It's because of the nature of the building that was approved through the A R B. It's quite expensive to build. And it fills up the area that is allowable. And we just felt it was too close to the creek and it was too expensive. And that's why we're looking around for alternative sites.
So you're leasing this space from Demkowski?
No, we're not. We have no agreement with Mister Falkowski whatsoever. We store, we store two of our trucks in Bridge Hampton right now through other individuals. And they've been stored in Bridge Hampton for years.
Good. Ed, is this, are you looking to lease it or to buy it? I thought you were looking to buy it.
I think we'd be looking to buy it.
Right.
So we have the owner's endorsement here, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Demkowski. Okay. No other questions? Then we'll close with a thirty day written comment period.
Motion.
Dennis, second by Zuccarelli, all in favor.
Right.
Opposed, extensions, six in favor. Thank you. Thank you, Mister Dearman.
Right, thank you, folks. Thank you so much.
Okay, so I think we've done the day. So we have a motion to adjourn by Gloria.
Motion closed.
Motion to clo- close, right, Dennis. Second by Dennis, all in favor. Opposed, extensions, six in favor. We are adjourned.
See you in two weeks.
In two weeks.
Yes, thank you.